Walking through the city lights all aglow. Everybody's got a story to show. Wheels keep spinning, streets overflow. Hustle never stops, we're in the flow. Skyline's high like our dreams in the air. Concrete jungle, we got flair. Rhythm of the night, we don't care. Underneath the stars, we breathe rare. In this urban jungle, we're alive. Heartbeats echo as we strive. Dreams collide where the streets survive. Together we're bright, side by side.
And good afternoon, everybody. And today, these candidates here are vying on why they should be one of the 13 councillors on Palmerston North City Council. But with every election, there's one thing stepping in their way, and that's your vote. And coming here live from the Evelyn Rawlin Room of Square Edge Community Arts Centre. God, I feel like I've got a lot of tongue twisters here. And we've got a decent full house of candidates here standing for office. Now, before we sit there and let go, let's get to our random order sheet to find out who gets to go first. And we've got Miriam stepping in on behalf of her husband Lou today. And I love it when you've got these, was it? A nice couple where both parties get just as involved in the process. So yeah, the opening statement for your husband.
I'm representing Lou. He has that famous quotation, he's not just talk. So we've been involved in, he's been involved in different community projects like the street ban, feeding the homeless and also sheepish ways, providing homes for people who are homeless and people who lives on the street. And the third one, we are, he is very busy at the moment doing voluntary treasurer job at the product. Great power, thank you.
Okay, next up, Jack.
Kiura, I'm Jack Cole. I'm very passionate to be a councillor, to serve in Palmerston North because I have a lot of skill and also I can add value to these people that, that I have the technical background because I'm a trained technical person and also in economic wise, I, I'm an investor and also, also that I have knowledge about, about managing money and so on. So I'm looking at the value of each, each things that I can help the rate payer to reduce their costs and also a lot of things that I can contribute. Thank you so much.
Okay, next up, Karen.
Kiura, it's been a real pleasure to serve as a city councillor now for nine years. And during that time, I've worked hard to listen to my community and to respond to the issues that have been raised in a proactive way. I've worked hard to come to council meetings really well prepared. I've had patience and determination, especially when it comes to budget time, going through the budgets line by line, to try and ensure my community is getting the best value out of every rate per dollar. But what I'm hearing loud and clear from my community are big concerns around the size of rates increases and the issue, the whole issue around rates affordability. And that's a big concern to me, particularly with the upcoming new water bill that people will also be receiving. I've actively pursued budget reductions, more affordable options for our wastewater upgrade, keeping water services within local control, and I've promoted more sustainable models for our social housing delivery. If re-elected, I'll continue to work constructively and keep your best interests at the heart of my decision making.
Okay, Dave.
Hello, everybody. My name's Dave Salisbury. I'm standing for Palmerston North City Council and what a pleasure it is to meet you. Palmerston North has got some big challenges coming up, coming down the pipeline from both government and various organisations. There's going to be pressure that's going to be put on council for the next few years to make some very important decisions. There's a combined water entity being put together, there's also changes in the Resource Management Act as well. And my campaign is based on positivity, moving Palmer forward, it needs a good positive voice, it needs some ambition and a bit of enthusiasm at council. I'm a new person trying to come onto council to add some energy and I'd like to be part of the solutions for the future. I'm honest, I'm straight talking, I'm open to conversations with everyone and I'll always be available on behalf of the constituents. So I look forward to your vote and if you make me number one, I'd really appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, next up, Kim.
Fantastic. Pleased to be here and asking everyone for their number one vote for Palmerston North City Council. I believe I'll be able to bring that charisma, uniqueness, nerve and talent to be on council and to represent the community, from the Rainbow Community to renters and to our most honourable people. I've also had the privilege of being able to, through my work with the Manor Two Tenants Union, be able to present and sit in council over the last three years to watch and really observe and learn how the dynamics of council works. And I believe that's given me an edge to truly represent the community and those whose voices need to be heard around the table. So vote Kim.
Okay, and next up, Leonie.
Hi, I'm Leonie Harper. I've served on the council for the last 12 years and I'd like to be re-elected. I've been in business for 30 years and I am listening to the business community and what I'm hearing from businesses is that it's tough out there. I'm particularly hearing from businesses that are having trouble with getting resource and building consents, they're having trouble on the door of council to try and get those consents. So I would like to be re-elected but to also try and get a better process for those consenting problems that we're having. I also want to try and work, if I get re-elected, to try and make sure that we get a, to work on the rates because I think the rates have been a bit too high and I thought, think we need a more balanced box going forward. So re-elected Leonie Harper, number one going forward, thank you.
And Adrian.
G'day, Adrian Phillips, Kiura. I'm from Ashurst. I'm standing because I'd like to bring some balance into the council. I'm an independent, standing for Palmerston North City Council. I've had over 40 years in sales management, sales, regional management and running my own business. Concerns for Palmerston North are its rates, a concern also for Palmerston North's stimulation for the city. It faces a conundrum, which all councils do, which is a balance between spending and invigoration for the city. I can read a set of accounts, I'm accountable, I'm somebody that you can keep in contact with and I've got the experience to bring some new direction to the council. If you don't vote me number one, vote me number two. We're on a proportional representation candidacy and I'd love your vote. Thanks very much.
Okay, now we're going to get to the fun part of the show. So this is where we get to the box of questions. Now, just to say, we haven't got a question host today, so we're going to have the questions are in here, but we'll still get the candidates to pick out box numbers and it will still be random and even I don't know what order, actually, I'm going to do a live shuffle on here. Because I think we need to sit down there and make sure that they're somewhat random. So when I pick in the middle of the pile, I'm not picking, what's it called, the middle of the alphabet. Okay, so we'll put that back into the box. Okay, so how things go here is each candidate gets one, up to one minute to answer their questions and they pick out box numbers and answer the questions that are in them. Candidates have been given questions in advance for the show so they have an idea of what questions were out there and hopefully some of them have detailed notes of what it is, what they're going to answer. Also, each candidate gets given two button cards and one defer card. They can use their button cards for when they have a question that someone else gets that they want to answer. And when it comes to the defer cards, if they get a question they don't want to answer, they can always defer it on to someone else. Fingers crossed, we get the candidates using their button cards well, but we don't get them using their defer cards because if they're using the fair ones, they're not answering the questions. So let's kick off with our lovely random order sheet and it will split out different order. Adrian, you get to go first. What box number between 1 and 28?
28.
So 28, okay. No, 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 I've got, I've got them here. God, that will be a lot of walking around in there and I'll definitely get up to 10,000 steps in one show. Okay, now I've just got to make sure that I actually have put, yep, 4pm. Now, it is, do you support central governments, was it, introducing a rates cap onto local authorities and why? And it'll be H and I'm just idiot checking myself.
Repeat the question.
Question, so question H. Do you support central government introducing rate caps onto local authorities and why?
No, I don't and the reason I don't...
Your microphone?
Microphone, that one will do. Yep. No, I don't and the reason I don't is I believe we have local councils for a reason and that reason is that we better represent our communities. I think that rates are definitely an issue and in some cities and some councils, they are a much bigger issue than they are in Palmerston North. It is an issue for Palmerston North most certainly. We've had a 6% rate increase, we're not in the same situations as Dunedin or Wellington or West Coast, Warrapera area, for example. So it is a concern, the rates are a concern, but I don't think those matters should be controlled by central government. That's why we have local government.
And we've got a button from Dave.
Yes, so I'll button on that, on that particular topic, thank you so much. I do think there should be a rates cap imposed by government. And the reason I say that is that it's a bit like if I send my kids down to the corner shop and I give them $20 cash and I say, go shopping. Or if I gave them my FPoZ card and said, go shopping. Now, one of them would put real fiscal responsibility on them to say, this is how much you've got to spend and you've got to work within that number. If I just gave them a card and said, spend what you think's right, talk amongst yourselves, figure out the best solution, well, who knows where that end up. So I think it's good that government is coming in and saying, this is what we expect of you. And it's also good that our local community is also saying the same thing. We're saying, rate rises are too high and it's hurting us. So you're getting pressure from both sides of it. So I'm very much in favour of government coming in and setting at least some rules around that and saying what our expectations are. So I'm in favour of it. I think it's good anti-government to keep everyone honest.
Okay, next up, Kim. What box number?
117. Eleven.
Eleven. Okay, we've got S for Syrah. Palmerston North City Council has some cycleways along its arterial routes throughout the city. Is this a core function that Palmerston North City Council should provide or a nice to have?
Yeah, I don't cycle, so I'm not an avid cycle user, but I do believe that we should be doing everything we can to encourage active transport across every avenue, whether that be cycling, walking, running, bussing. So I believe we need to have a proactive approach to that because we need to connect our wider suburbs into our CBD and make sure that they can do so safely. So I am certainly pro improving cycleways. How that looks is entirely up to the tenure plan because we actually have to do it sustainably and affordably as well, so.
And we've got a button from Leonie.
Thank you, I just want to button on that. I didn't think I was going to use this card, but I decided to. I don't think that the council should be using funds for cycleways. I think that that fund should come from NZTA and it shouldn't come from the council. We should be using our funds for other essential things and cycleways isn't an essential, essential thing for the council. So I do disagree with that and I don't think that we should be spending our money on things that are more essential than cycleways. Thank you.
And with traditional fashion, Leonie, you get to pick the next box number. It seems to be a button thing, is that they always seem to be the next person.
Great, my favourite number is 10.
10. Okay, we've got AB. What's your biggest priority for the next term and how do you intend on delivering that?
Biggest priority? It's a tough one, there's lots of priorities. The biggest priority for council would be water and putting as much effort as we can into the water plan. So I'm going to concentrate on the water plan if I'm re-elected. So for me, it's water.
Okay, Miriam, what box number would you like?
Seven.
Seven? Okay, we've got M for Mike. Concerning the central government messaging around councils being a core reason for the cost of living crisis due to wasteful spending, do you think this is the case? Why or why not?
Can you please repeat? I can't.
So it's letter M for Mike?
Yeah.
Concerning the central government's messaging about councils being a core reason for cost of living, of the cost of living crisis due to wasteful spending, do you think this is the case? Why or why not?
Well, it is not only the current local council that had caused all this extravagant spending, but it was caused also by the, by the former government. So I'll, I don't agree that it's...
The council's fault?
The council should be responsible in everything because we have a change of government every three years and whatever decision they have made affects us.
And we've got a button from Karen.
Um, Kiura, I don't think rates are the sole reason for the cost of living crisis, but they certainly do contribute. So the main reasons of the cost of living crisis is more global and domestic contributing factors that really have been driving that. But it's a big consideration for us at council when we look at our rates. And unfortunately, the increase in rates is significantly more than wage increases and significantly more than CPI. So we're actually contributing to that because a higher and higher percentage of each person's household is being required to pay rates. And I'm really keen to curb that trend and address that going forward if re-elected.
And we have another button from Kim. Well, at least you know how to reconnect them.
Technical issue there. I kind of support what Karen's saying there about the rates, but just wanted to remind people that in Palmerston North, 50% of our citizens are actually renting and the rates that we charge get levied on to the landlord to ultimately pass it on to the renters in the form of rent. And when rent is between 40 to 60% of household incomes, the rent is one of the biggest costs that our tenants and people in the city cannot change, cannot negotiate and cannot refuse to pay. So it is more than just rates, it is also things like the power. Power has gone up 20 to 30% in the last two or three years and we just cannot sustain it and those who are renting cannot sustain increases and we need to be mindful of that. So just remember that 50% of our city is renting and is also paying rates and they can't negotiate those costs.
Okay, Dave, what box number?
Number seven.
Number, we've already got, had taken number seven.
Number eight then.
Number eight, no problem. Okay, we've got P for Papa. Do you support the fitting of solar panels to council buildings to offset daytime electricity use?
Yeah, this is a really good question. I live in a house, believe it or not, that has solar panels on the roof and it has made a significant difference to our power bill. So I can definitely say that at certain times of the year, it's been fantastic. So I do see the benefits of solar panels, but then I also know there's a cost involved in cost installing it, cost of looking after it and whether it's worthwhile long term and whether it makes a big contribution or not. If I'm on council, these sort of decisions, I'll go in with an open mind, listen to the experts, listen to both sides and positions of it and I'll independently make a call at the time depending on what advice I get given. So I'm not coming in with some fixed position, but I do definitely know the value of solar panels and how much they can help with a power bill. But as far as making a decision goes, if it works for the central city library to have solar panels while they're doing upgrades and it all works, then by all means, let's consider it and let's, let's think about it. Thank you.
Okay, Karen, what box number?
Number one.
Number one, well, very important number for all voters out there. You've got to put number one on there for your votes to all count. Okay, oh God, I'm going to, I'm going to have fun with this tongue twister. My, my, do you think that Maori wards such as our own, was it, Poal? Yeah, well, Maori ward, Pa'au. Yeah, I always seem to get this one, it's a tongue twister. Oh, oh no, after tomorrow night. Maori ward strengthens democracy, why or why not? L for Lima.
Yeah, thanks for the question. I do think having Maori wards strengthens democracy because it ensures that that section of our population, 20% of our community are Maori, it ensures that they have a voice at the table. Prior to Maori wards, there were no Maori representatives at our council table. So this has improved that presentation for them.
Okay, oh, we've got a button, two buttons.
One. Oh, I don't get two, do I?
No, 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 but Leonie has as well.
Yeah, I know, you go first.
I disagree. I actually think that a person should get voted in on, for who they are and as has happened on the Horizons Council, Wurruwata Yaweiawi was voted in on his own rights. So I think that people can get voted in for who they are and not for who they represent. So I think that people can be voted in for who they are. Thank you.
Okay, Adrian.
I think there's an opportunity here as well, so it's a difficult one. I attended a recent meeting on Maori wards in Palmerston North and my view changed somewhat having attended that meeting. There is an opportunity here, there's a significant percentage of Maori in our defence, which is an important part of the Manor Two economy and a growing one, I might hasten to add. And there is also issues around representation for eco-terrorism and our relationships with the environment and engagement. As long as these ward seats are proportional to the population and individuals elect to go on to those, for those votes for the ward, I'm fine with that. But I'm also multicultural myself and my family and support the engagement across the board with all cultures. So I think there can be some very positive elements to this as well. Thank you.
Okay, Jack, what box number?
Give me number two.
Number two. Okay, let's bring out what's going to come out for number two. Okay, we got I for India. Do you support implementing safer speed limits around our schools within the Palmerston North City territorial limits?
You mean that, of course, yes, of course, to protect the safety...
Mark front up a bit more?
What, what, what question is it? Can you...
I, I, I for India.
So about the speed limit. Regarding about a speed limit around the school of Palmerston North, of course, it's yes, because it protects the safety of the children and that is number one priority. And also, I think it's, it's good that we even can, can implement some road bombs to slow down the speed. That's what I, I propose. Thank you.
Okay, so we've gone down through seven questions and we're going to kick off for another round. Dave, what box number?
Well, you pick a number for me, mate.
Oh, 22 is quite close to me.
That sounds good, okay, good. So surprise me.
Well, the question still will be a bit of a surprise. Okay, E for Echo. Do you think the council should be involved in providing social housing and if so, how?
Yeah, this is a real doozy, this one. Depending on where you sit on the political spectrum and I understand there's between sort of 400 and 500,000 social houses, sorry, 400 and 500 social houses at the Palmerston North City Council are involved in. I understand the move isn't to introduce more social housing, it's just to look after the current bunch of social houses that are out there. But it does raise the question about government, government spending on social housing and the line between the two. I see the government is changing the rules around the various well beings, around social wellbeing, environmental, cultural and also economic. So in there, and whatever's happening from government as far as feeding into local councils goes, the way we may well be us getting pushed into a position where that will have to be addressed. So it is a bit of a curly old one, something that is probably going to come down and be thrown on Palmerston North City Council in the next few years. But I can definitely see both sides of the argument because there's a clear need out there, but it also has to be balanced with who's responsible.
You've reused your buttons. Sorry, yeah, Karen, what box number?
Number two.
Number two. No, that's been taken. Do you want number three?
I'll go for three then, thank you.
Okay, we've got N for November. What will you do to stop poor council expenditure, allocate resources to critical infrastructure and rein in huge increases?
Okay, well, I've got a long history, my colleagues will confirm this with you, of going through all the budgets line by line to identify potential savings. And I'm pleased that there has been some support, particularly in this term, to progress some of those. Any decision at the council table does rely on a majority vote. And I think some of my colleagues are starting to hear from the community that real message that rates increases beyond what they think are acceptable and, and they're starting to be a little bit more willing to do something about that. So we are allocating more and more resource to critical infrastructure as well. We've stepped up our investment into our renewal programmes, our capital renewals, which is basically looking after the assets that we have. But I will continue to ensure that we address poor spending because there is many, many non-essential items currently in the council budgets.
Okay, Adrian.
Oh, what have you got there?
Got four, five, six, nine, 12, 13...
Let's keep going after that, there'll be four then, won't it?
Four, no problem. Well, as I say, yeah, those numbers are useful on the voting paper.
Yes, they are.
Okay, so this one says for more the rural outskirts of Palmerston North. Should rural communities have a say in the operations of council-owned rural water schemes? C for Charlie.
There's a good expression years ago, which was yo and yes, meaning a combination of yes and no. There certainly is a, and it's strong implications for rural in terms of how we utilise our water resources. So my colleague about two steps down on my left was talking earlier about collaboration and communication. I think, yes, there should be collaboration, control, I'm not so sure. The city has got response... The city has got responsibilities in terms of its ratepayers, um, both commercial, uh, business use of water as well as, um, domestic water use. And we've got this huge cost coming up shortly, um, which will affect ratepayers significantly around the three waters and other elements in terms of water resources around Palmerston North. So, um, yeah, it'd be helpful. Um, I'd be keen to see more collaboration between three councils here. Um, so it's a matter of those councils working together. Thank you.
Okay, Jack, what box number? Uh, five, six, uh, we've got most of, most of the double digits in the teens and some of the double digits in the twenties. Five? Okay. J for Juliet.
J.
Spending needs to happen within budget without increasing rates. What lu- what services or luxuries would you stop? J.
Yeah, I don't think there is any what service that I can stop because, because I don't see any luxury or what services that can be stopped. So that is my answer. That without increasing the rate. Because they are, the council currently are doing, doing well in, in these services.
You're the first person who's actually answered it that way as well, uh, after that question's gone through multiple shows. Um, bottom from Dave?
Yes, uh, I'll butt in on that one. Um, I see it more as not what can be saved, but what is council doing as far as revenue generation goes? I think there's real opportunities here to build the pie up to make it, you know, larger than what it is now. Things like tourism generation, I mean, tourism's down massively, uh, in Palmerston North. We don't get backpackers anymore, it's not part of the backpacker trail. The international airport, for example, doesn't exist anymore, hasn't been happening since two thousand and eight. So I see real opportunities to generate more revenue. What about artificial intelligence in city council, for example? It's supposed to be putting people out of their jobs, there's gotta be savings there surely. So I look at opportunities there, uh, and new things that can be thought of, they just to get it and have to be discussed and talked about. So reducing rates is one thing, but I think we can actually generate more revenue as well. So that's what I'm all about.
Is, is there another button as well?
It was, but I've got two of them, so I'll put my button a second time. Um, there's some real opportunities here and I kinda like the theme that you're tackling there, but I think there are two aspects, as one is that you've got to where you can reduce expenditure because that's the only way you'll have a happy community with, um, in terms of increased rates. But the second thing is to look at opportunities within the city. And Palmerston North needs some invigoration and some vision from my perspective. Having just returned from a trip around the South Island and seeing cities that are not on the main tourist routes, that are still open after nine o'clock at night, makes me actually a little bit depressed when I come back to Palmerston North because it's not a city that is attractive to make people wanna stay. If you ask students, they say it's a boring city. I don't think it is, but it could be made a much more invigorating city and that's gonna attract business. It's gonna attract people to stay and we need greater retention of students, we also need more students. If you've ever visited Palmerston North between the twenty-fifth of December and the third of January, you'd think they'd put a sign up, go away.
I think you've just summed up Wellington as well on that same topic.
Yes, exactly.
Cause that's, it's why I actually go to Vidicar Hill for a week to sell coffee because it's a two-week dead spot in my revenue for my business. Yeah, yes, I, I am planning to be there if the, if the new queen lets me come in for this year. Okay, um, Kim, what box number?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four? Okay, we've got AA. Do you support household food waste collections to stop organic waste from going to the landfill?
Uh, yes, I, I do. The caveat would be it has to still be sustainable, uh, and affordable to do. But certainly works in a lot of other, uh, countries, Denmark, Scandinavia. Um, and it's a great idea of where, of how we can again tap into a renewable source, uh, for the bio, uh, biogas, uh, et cetera. Um, and we just have to, I think, do it smart and wise, but it certainly is going to stop, uh, the pollution and CO2 emissions from just our green waste going to landfill because that's currently where it goes if it's not composted. Uh, and that's not an option either, so I think we do have to do something proactive about it and that's a start.
Bottom from Jack?
I think, what can I see from the Auckland City Council that they provide the, the organic bin to collect the, the household food waste? And it costs the taxpayer eight hundred and forty dollars per year. And that, 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 that is not well received by the taxpayer and, uh, and few people are using it. So I don't think it's, it's going to be a success and that, that will increase our cost. So we will have to implement another way of, of, uh, the organic waste. Maybe we come up with certain, we look at certain, uh, technology or with certain way of, uh, disposing the household organic food waste. So that is my, my thought, because we can see one failure. We'd want to implement a failure into, uh, Palmerston North.
Yeah, and just to confirm, you mean ratepayers, not taxpayers?
Rate, rate payer.
Yep, sweet, yeah. Um, Miriam, are you chucking a button?
I think organic collection should be encouraged and there should be a, um, a bin or like the waste that we have here instead of being collected because it costs a lot of money or ratepayers' money collecting it and only few people participate. So if we have a, a pu- a park or a section here in the, in our city where people who are into green waste can, can throw their waste and be collected, then so be it. Not, not everyone's, it, cause it's not everyone's cup of tea to be, uh, uh, conserving their food scraps.
Hmm. Well, yeah, people, yeah, people like me who live in an apartment building, so a compost bin isn't really the right option in the backyard. Yeah. Okay, um, Miriam, you get next box number. Go and raid the microphone from the question box desk down there. Oh, you got one down there, okay, sweet.
We've got all three.
All three, all combined down one end. What box number would you like?
Uh, eleven?
Uh, I've got eleven gone, but we do have twelve.
Okay.
Okay, we got G for golf. The ta- at the government and the taxpayers' union have been accusing councils of being irresponsible with, with large percentage rates increases, what is your view?
Okay, um, it's, uh, for me, each city, it has his, has, uh, their own budget for all the facilities and the resources that they're going to provide. So I don't think that, uh, s- our city is really over spending when it comes to taxpayers' money or, so, yeah. I, yeah. I don't think we're res- responsible for the rate increases because there, there is a, there, when there is a project, there is also, uh, because of, we import lots of our stuff that, uh, that is included in our, uh, that is included in the project and there's an increase of prices. So, uh, that's why it also affects the in, the rate increases. Okay?
Yeah, correlation, our co- uh, the costs go up, which means the rates have to go up to recover the cost. Yeah, okay, uh, Leoni, what box number?
You'll have to give me a clue on what's next.
Oh, I've got six, nine, got most of the, the teens and a few, a few of the twenty.
Six.
Okay, we got F for Foxtrot. There has been much media coverage about candidates' behaviour towards their fellow candidates over the country. What are your personal values that make you assume a candidate to be a councillor?
Thanks for the question, I think it's a lovely question. I think you need to be honest and transparent and as a council, as a group of councillors around the table, we get on very well together and I think that, um, that starts at the beginning of a term. We set our boundaries and we set our, um, we, we, um, have a, um, we have a session together where we actually open up and talk together as a group. And I think that's where it all starts from, right from the start. It's a team-based session and I think that's where it needs to start from, leadership from the start. That's what we did at the beginning of the term, that's where it needs to start from, that's what it has started from. And we've got a very good group that does get on very well together. I don't think anyone has been very nice together around the table this term or the last term actually. So we all get on very well, so thank you for the question.
Uh, John, a button from Jack?
Uh, I don't agree with that because I always believe in competitions. I always believe in new people coming into the, in, into the council group. And every challenger will come up with new, new ideas and, uh, and every competition will produce better results. So therefore I think that, that we need new people to come in because things change all the times and, uh, also the technology changes all the times. So it's better to have some, and some old one and some new one retained.
Okay. Okay, so we've got through fourteen questions, so let's try and get through another seven. I'm not sure if we're gonna be able to get through all twenty, uh, twenty-eight boxes, but I'm sure twenty-one's still quite a good number. And you guys are brilliant at using your buttons, get a very good range of, uh, opinions across the board. Uh, Jack, what box number?
What box do you have now?
Uh, I've got, uh, from nine and then thirteen right up all the way in the teens and, um, uh, was it?
Then give me a nine.
Sorry?
Number nine.
Number nine? Okay, we got V for Victor. If you are elected as a councillor, will you decelerate council spending on unwanted green projects and concentrate on vital necessary infrastructure needs such as roading?
Well, as you says, that, uh, prosperity comes of the city is to maintain, uh, the, the roading and, uh, road constructions. Because we need connectivity and, uh, good infrastructures to increase our wealth and investment. And that will, will help, helps our, our city to become more vibrant. And that's why, that's why I think it is good, it's necessary.
Okay. Okay, Miriam, what box number? Only got double digits now.
Fourteen?
Fourteen? Okay, we got R for Romeo. Palmerston North City Council has many places where tactical tiles are in use on footpaths to assist users who are vision impaired to know where it's safe to cross roads and what type of crossing they are using. Is this a core function that Palmerston North City Council should provide or a nice to have?
Hmm, how is it?
And for those who are wondering, it's those yellow dots that sit around both pedestrian crossings. Very good for those who are walking around with their cellphones on in their hand and not looking where they're going as well.
Well, first of all, the tactile tiles were used for, for vision, for people with visionary problems. And, um, uh, to me, it is a vital, a vital necessity that we should provide because we, we, because we have few, we have ratepayers who are, who have visionary problems.
Uh, you've used up your buttons though.
Yeah, you've used up, only two buttons, right?
Yeah, only two buttons.
But can I give another chance?
I don't know, I have to give everyone a chance and I said no to Leoni earlier. No, we only get two buttons. No one else wants to get, wanna make a bargain or donate a button?
I don't know, you got it, you want me to tell them?
No, 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 okay. Uh, Leoni?
Uh, you can be number.
Oh, I think number twenty-one because that's, uh, was a, a good age that everyone likes to call themselves.
Right.
Or I can say the vo- the, uh, voting, uh, first time my grandma voted in nineteen forty-nine? When it was still twenty-one? Okay, uh, T for Tango. What do you see as the main difference between Maori landowners and hapu in the terms of their relationship with Palmerston North City Council?
I'm gonna use my defer card.
Defer card, who, who would you like to defer it to?
Karen.
That's fine, I'm happy to answer that question. Um, the main, in terms of landowners, there aren't any difference, um, in the legislation, whether you're Maori or non-Maori. The RMA and, um, Building Acts are the same for everyone. Whereas, um, in terms of hapu, in terms of their relationship with Palmerston North, um, their relationship is on the basis of a treaty partner. So, ca- you know, there's really strong obligations that council has to work with Iwi and hapu as a treaty partner. So we have a really constructive and positive, positive working relationship with our Manafenua partners, um, Rangatane, and, um, that's been strengthening more and more in recent years.
Uh, don't let go of the microphone because you're up next, Karen.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Okay, Y for Yankee. This is another rubbish one. Auckland Council has recently shifted to taking away recycling bins of people who mix in general race with their recycling. Should Palmerston North City Council consider removing recycling bins for doing the same thing?
No, I don't think that's the first step, um, to address this issue. We have got chips on our recycling bin, um, primarily so we can identify where there are problems occurring. But the more constructive way is some communication with the, um, um, people who are perhaps putting the wrong things in the wrong bins and some education so that they can be really clear in their own mind about where they need to put, um, their recycling and where they need to put their rubbish.
Okay, Adrian, what box number?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. It's untrue saying you guys like to go from the bottom to the top in the numbers.
Just somebody has to have thirteen.
But, but a bit of you are like trying to rank it, rank a STV ballot paper at the moment. Okay. O for Oscar. Issues around climate change are becoming more important. What are your thoughts on supporting an ana- anaerobotic? Anaerobic, sorry, yeah, I like, don't know why I like to put robotic there. Digestion of food waste to produce biogas similar to the part in Reparua. Please note, this is not an incineration of general waste.
No, I had a look at this today in a bit of detail. That site in Reparua was quite successful. Um, I think it's, it's, it's a significant volume of material is processed which doesn't have to go through the landfill. So that's positive in itself. Secondly, it generates significant amount of, uh, natural gas, um, for alternative energy sources. It also provides, um, a significant amount of processed organic matter for fertiliser. So I like the concept, um, I'm not an expert in this field or so I would always suggest that you get a group together to defer and looking at the actual scientific background behind this. But for me, this is a positive step forward and it does beg questions like the solar panels on the city about trying to create a balance between the expenditure you send and the reduction of costs in the future. So there are long-term benefits from these types of projects which must be considered as well as short-term costs.
Okay, Kim, what box number?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Legal drinking age.
Oh, yes, 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 and the age where you can bypass pericent for getting married, I think you can do, yeah. Yeah, it does make me stump me how the- Yeah, it does make me stump me how the marriage age was 16, but the voting age was 21 for a very long time. A for Alpha, what political parties are you linked to?
So I am running as an independent. However, I do have the disclaimer that I am a member of the Labour Party, have also been a member of the Green Party as well. And I also caveat that too, I'm a member of the Taxpayers Union, PSA Union, and actively engage in all things political. So yes, but I am running independent and no political party is involved in my campaign.
Okay, Dave, what box number?
Surprise me, Sam.
Surprise you're 27?
Sure, why not?
Okay, Z for Zulu. What's one big opportunity or challenge you see for the city?
I just want to go back a little bit to what I mentioned earlier about Palmerston North Airport and the assets that the council loosely has control over and interest in. And I think the Palmerston North Airport is underplaying its hand. It's an enormous asset. It is having a lot of money being spent on it at the moment. What it's delivering as far as passengers go and also the potential in the future is questionable as far as what they're projecting for growth. International tourism needs to come back. It hasn't been back for a long, long time. There are international flights to both Hamilton and Dunedin. They may just come back. And there's zero talk from Palmerston North Airport about the potential of international flights. So I say let's get that conversation going again. It'll take at least 18 months to get the discussions going. With the huge catchment of people around the Manoa Two, I think it'd be good to get those people fed into Palmerston North Airport and to really make some money. So I see that as a huge opportunity.
And we have a button from Karen.
Thank you. I'm really happy to answer this question because I think a huge challenge for us in Palmerston North City is getting our budget back into a financially sustainable plan. Currently, our long-term plan attracted an adverse opinion from Audit New Zealand because it simply wasn't, isn't realistic. It's got over $2 billion worth of capital programs included. And we simply, it's simply not realistic and we just don't have a way of funding that level of infrastructure. 1.6 billion of that is new infrastructure and for growth. And so those are the things we have a lot of choice over. With the challenge of the new water bill, it's going to be a huge challenge for residents to receive a rates bill and a water CCO bill. And we've got to ensure that the way that we manage that transition and that process is a financially sustainable one and an affordable one for our ratepayers. The water CCO bill alone will increase by two and a half times over the coming years or up to two and a half times from around 1,000 to about 2,500. So that's a huge concern. So we really need to address those issues.
Okay, and it doesn't look like we're going to be able to get through the next seven questions in three minutes because seven candidates, at least seven minutes, it's not going to work at the moment. But that's all right. We can continue moving on. Now, we're going to take a quick break before we go. A little bit of housekeeping about how things work here. It's in the ballot. It's in the ballot as an independent nonprofit organisation that runs on small dollar donations. So every bit you contribute helps bring these shows. Today's cost to sit there and bring these shows here is $120 is our venue cost for hire. We also have a $14 a day charge for Starlink, $31 a day for Restream hosting. Now, we normally, and our budget was two, but we've only bought on one car. So we've only got $100 to transport instead of two and $50 for refreshments. So if you'd like to sit down there and help contribute to It's in the Ballot productions, feel free to head to our Eventbrite page and use the option, was it Koha without emission? You can also head to our Give a Little page and put in a Give a Little donation there. Or if you want to have the funds get here as quick as possible, please head and do a direct credit deposit into our Kiwi Bank account. Our details are on it'sintheballot.nz and under the donations section. So we'll take a quick break here and then we'll be back for hard-hitting questions. Well, now we've got the mute key off. Oh, oh, good, good, good. Always seem to sit there and forget that. So welcome back to the show and now it's ready for hard-hitting questions. Okay, so let's get ready for hard-hitting questions. Hard-hitting question number one. Do you think the council is doing enough in the terms of waste, water treatment and disposal? And we have a nice lovely random list here. Adrian, you get to go up first.
Well, how lucky am I?
Thank you. Yes, it probably is. Probably wouldn't like to be doing as much as it is, to be honest. The council has chosen to follow option three. If you are aware of what option three is, the Collaborative Water Services Delivery Plan with Horu Fenua and Rangatiki. This creates a council-controlled organisation to manage water, wastewater, stormwater together. It's a significant step forward because it keeps decisions closer to our community than the old three waters model, while still giving us the scale and expertise needed to meet a much tougher environmental standard. Remember, public consultation suggested this was the preferred option. Alone in Palmerston North would struggle to find and fund it and deliver the structure we needed. But also, we want to be clear, this does not remove the challenge. And we've got to look at the ongoing costs. And my belief is in kaizen, continual improvement. So we need to do this with proper supervision and make sure we deliver by 2028, which is the consent deadline.
Okay, next up, Miriam. The hard-hitting question number one.
To me, I think the city council is doing enough for, when it comes to wastewater treatment and disposal. And because I've been watching, reading the Horizon Newsletter all the time. And I know that they have done some good job in the past. And with collaboration nowadays, with the common collaboration with the Horu Fenua and other councils that will can, in some ways, can save some money. Not just for us, but for the other council also. Thank you.
Okay, Jack?
Thank you. I think the answer is yes because at the moment it's fine. But we can still look for improvement because of the cost. But we can still look for improvement because of the cost. And I think we can, and also we can also put in some money as a reserve in case of when the things comes out for upgrading, upgrading and also repairs or emergency. I think we should, the Palmerston North should have some reserve for it. Thank you.
Leoni.
Thanks for the, sorry. Thanks for the question. This is just about the wastewater and its treatment. It's not about the ongoing plan for the management of the water treatment. So just about the wastewater. There's two things. One is about talking with Iwi. And I was in a meeting this morning with Iwi and they don't feel we've actually spoken to them well enough in terms of Rukawa and with Rangatani. So no, I don't think we've done a good enough job with them, both of them. They told us that this morning. But in terms of this wastewater, we first started off and it was at 470. We started at 350 and that's 350 million. And then we got it up to 470 million. So we have got some issues in terms of this wastewater. This is for the BPO and that's where we're at at the moment. So we've still got issues, but we're going to get there in the end. But we do need to consult more with our Iwi to get it right. Thank you.
Dave.
Yeah. Look, Palmerston has an issue. You know, we're basically inland. And so if you were coastal, it would be nice and easy. We could just put a big pipeline, put our wastewater out into the sea. And we wouldn't have to think about it too much. But in Palmerston North's, you know, unique geographical location, it's something we need to consider. Now, the wastewater after it's treated, I understand, goes into the Manoa Two River, which on the surface sounds terrible. But I understand as well, everyone's aware it's a problem and it's being treated as much as it can do to try and fit within resource management guidelines. I understand the people that work at the wastewater plant are some of the smartest cookies you can get in a room as far as being dealing with the problem and being able to manage it. Clearly, there's more research going on and there's more ability to improve things. Leoni just mentioned about negotiating with other parties as well, make sure everyone's on board. So it is an ongoing concern and I think it'll be part of the challenges, particularly around cost that the council will need to address going forward. Thank you.
Okay, Dave. Oh no, I've read done, Dave. Karen.
Thank you. Yeah, I think council is doing enough for wastewater. We have a really high-quality current water treatment. But the consent for that does run out in 2028. So we've been working on a project called Nature Calls. Now, there has, in my view, there's been some flawed aspects to that project and that not enough consideration of the cost has gone in. We had a framework that only gave 10% weighting to the cost, which resulted in a proposed $647 million program. Our community said loud and clear, we simply can't afford that. Some of us tried to get it down to under 300, but the majority decision was to look at other options under 480 million. So that process is underway. We have a range of options from 285 million right through to 700 or 800 million. And we're still currently going through that process. But I'm keen to ensure that we find something that our community can afford.
And Kim.
Fantastic. I sentiment everyone's position that we do a great job with the wastewater and treating it. We do have to find a solution that is both sustainable and affordable. But what I would say is that an option of just discharging to the river solely is not the option. Any water that goes into our beautiful river has to be treated and has to be at the point where we could drink it before we discharge it into the water. It's not acceptable to put any pollution or wastewater straight out to sea or into our river. That has to be treated, it has to be to a standard and we have to be able to afford it. And that is the issue, is having the balance between ensuring we've got somewhere for it to go, but also that we can afford to maintain it long-term as well. But just putting it straight into the river is not the solution and not an appropriate answer either.
Okay, let's get ready for hard-hitting question number two. Are you comfortable with the way the council manages its debt position? Let's kick off with Miriam. Your honour.
What was the question?
Are you comfortable with the way the council manages its debt position?
Well, I'm just speaking on behalf of my husband. So at the moment.
Mark for an apple.
As far as I can, as I have heard, the council has been doing very, very, very well in managing their debts. But, okay. Because as a dictator also, we have the interest that we have to face every year. So we can't really, much as we would like to manage our debt, but with the increasing rates and the different different government that governs us, we don't, we can only do our very best. And I think Palmerston North has done their best. Palmerston North chief councillors have done their very best in our, for our debts. That's more I can say.
Okay, Leoni.
Thanks for the question. I think that we have got too many projects that are in our current long-term plan that I would like to get reduced because I think the debt is too high. So those projects, things like Tumotoa Potua, I think that should be gone so that we, because it's a wishful project. We've got other projects that are sitting in our long-term plan that I think should go. And what I'd like to see it replaced with is I'd like to see a project that we could try and redo Featherstone Street. Because I think Featherstone Street at the moment is a dog's breakfast. People aren't driving down Featherstone Street. And I think I've had a costing for, to get Featherstone Street redone. And it's about 2 million to change the bus stop. So I think if we could basically get that done, that would help us then get a lot of people satisfied in Palmerston North to get Featherstone Street redone. So I haven't completely answered the question, but I wanted to get that across in this statement. So thank you and vote Leoni number one. Thank you. Bye.
Karen.
No, I'm not comfortable with the current way that council manages its debt. It's utilizing debt far too much for unnecessary and non-essential projects. And there is so much in our long-term plan that is not affordable. Our current debt is already 293 million and it's planned to be 553 million within a few years. Last year, our debt repayments were 7.7 million. By year 10, they're proposed to be 73.4 million if we do everything in our current plan. So absolutely, I've been proposing, it's hard decisions to make, I know, but I have been proposing big reductions. Some have been successful and have saved ratepayers millions of dollars. But we haven't gone far enough, rates are still too high. I, I would, there's a whole list of projects that I would be happy to defer or decrease, including 17 million at Arena, where we've just spent 17 million, the Civic Marae on Tumotoa Potua and many other projects.
Okay, next up, Kim.
Yes, it's an interesting question. I think the debt is starting to get to a point where it is a little bit out of control. But I think when we have a conversation around debt management, we also need to have a conversation around how we grow revenue. And we also need to look at, are we actually spending our council funding efficiently and effectively? Are we getting best bang for our buck? Are we supporting locals first in this drive? Because under a model that I've been working on and looking at, the Preston model, it's about all of our council money going back into our local council first and generating more income, more revenue, as well as balancing the debt. It has to be a three-pronged approach. We can't just do reduce debt, reduce debt. We have to increase revenue, spend our money more efficiently and reduce debt all at the same time. It has to be a three-pronged approach to work and that's what I would bring to council. Vote Cameron, number one.
Jack.
Thank you. I think the answer is no because, because the council think that borrowing is another option. I always believe that each dollar you spend, you must have some wealth in return, a misbenefit in returns. And then it is to be accountable for every taxpayer, every payer. So you should see what prioritize, what is, what is need and not what is want to reduce the debt. That's what I suggest. Thank you.
Okay, Dave.
Yeah, Dave, well, it's sort of a conversation you could spend half an hour talking about because there are so many sides to it. You know, if you're wanting to invest for something for the long term, then paying for it today for something that's going to be used for decades or even 100 years from now, then how do you fund that? And how are you going to pay for that? And where are you going to pay it back? So infrastructure is important and funding for infrastructure is important. I also know that with the change and the joining together as far as the water activities go with the two other councils that we're getting engaged with, that's going to transfer a lot of that debt off to another entity, which is going to sit separately from the council. And that's going to free up the debt ceiling and the debt limitations that Palmerston North Council has. What I'd like to show is some real prudence around what happens to that debt ceiling going forward. Is it just going to get added to? Because it seems like it's an easy thing we can add to. Or is there going to be some real constraint there? So some big decisions are going to come up as that debt ceiling gets moved. So it's a big discussion and, you know, we could be here all day talking about that one. But that's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, Adrian.
Interesting question and always a hot question because the public has to end up paying for it in the end through their rates. The council is in the middle of major development, voting, infrastructure, transport hub. These are important projects. They bring economic growth, create jobs and help position our city in the future. That's positive. But we can't ignore the wider reality. Geopolitical pressures and inflation have made economic recovery very difficult for New Zealand and will probably continue to do so. Households are feeling it and so are ratepayers. That means councils must constantly review the size, timing of big projects and manage expenditure with far tighter discipline under financial pressures and hopefully move forward as pressures ease. We can't afford $65,000 bus stops. We could have built 15 bus stops for each bus stop we've purchased. On top of that, looming costs, three waters, nature calls, water upgrade, all of this is going to increase future costs. So we have to manage and manage well.
Okay, let's get ready for hard-hitting question number three. What is your position on repaying the Te Poa Maori ward for the Palmerston North City Council and the Tonga Maori constituency for Horizon's Regional Council? Why do you hold that position? We'll start off with Dave.
Yeah, this is a really good question and it's, you know, I can definitely see both sides of the argument. You could take the side as far as saying there are two guaranteed spots on the city council that are just there and they're always going to be there. However, influencing the majority of the council, that's going to be a real challenge if you are wanting to have sort of Maori issues addressed and being taken on by the majority of the council. So it's from a democratic theoretical point of view, I'm not a fan of it. However, I understand the Maori long-term view as far as the world goes. They have a much longer term view than just a three years of a council. So I understand that and respect that as well. And so having a permanent spot on the council for that Maori voice, it's a bit like having a life patron in a club. You know, someone that comes along at the end of the day and says, hey, remember the old days or remember the future? Or let's think about the big picture? So I think that's where Maoriism really adds some value, is looking at the big picture. So I think having them involved in council is really important and I'm more fan of it on that basis. Thanks.
Adrian.
My strength is not that of one person, but of many. That's why I support retaining both Maori wards in Palmerston North and the Horizon's council. Because representation is not only about fairness, it's about unity, strength and the opportunities that come when we move forward together. These wards and constituencies give Maori a direct voice in the decisions that shape our city and our region and have done so successfully for several years. They also open doors for collaboration and business where Maori enterprises are strong and growing and defence where we have so many servicemen and women in the community. That said, I come from a multicultural family and we cannot ignore the wider community and that should also be included. Pacifica, immigrants and Chinese, Indian communities within the Manoa Two. We're a multicultural society and we need full representation, which includes Maori and our principles under the treaty. Thank you. Number one and number two vote. Thank you.
Okay, Kim.
Excellent. I am fully in support of this. I have not heard any reasonable, sound argument as to why we can't and or shouldn't. And I'm just going to remind people, we had the same conversation around our homosexual law reform and marriage equality. And I can assure you that if we do have them, the world will not end and there will still be brightly colored rainbows over the mighty Manoa Two and Palmerston North. Vote Kim, number one.
Okay, Miriam.
To be honest, at first I was against the Maori ward and the Horizon Regional Council Tonga. But for the last three years, observing how it had improved the talk among the councillors and the regional councillors and also getting their opinion on, not only on Maori, but on the collaboration of the people that are representing the Maori ward and the regional council ward. I am, I am for it this time. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, Karen.
Thank you. I've supported having Maori wards at the council table and for similar reasons, as I mentioned earlier. You know, 20% of our population is Maori and now we do have protected Maori representation at the table. I opposed the referendum as I knew it would impose a cost onto our community and would bring up another divisive conversation, which hasn't always been pleasant for all parties. However, the government did make the call that this would go to a referendum. So my commitment is that I'll work constructively with whatever the outcome of that referendum is. But I do hope that our Maori community is represented at the table going forward.
Jack.
What worked for us today is what worked for us tomorrow as the Maori has served us well. So we will, in my opinion, we will continue to have them. And that works, works well with the Palmerston, work well in Palmerston North. That is my opinion.
Leoni.
Thank you. I've voted around the council table that I have voted not for the Maori wards. So I've been against them. My husband's Maori and my kids are Maori. But I do think that people should stand on their own feet and stand for themselves. So that's been my opinion. But I do think that the referendum has been there and put there by the government and we should basically put it out to the community. The community should vote and I'll stand by whatever the community say. So if the community say... So if the community say that we go forward and have Maori wards, then I'll stand by that. And whatever happens, happens. So I'll be happy to see what the results are of the referendum. Thank you.
Okay, now it's time for closing statements. Each candidate will get one minute on why they should receive your first preference vote at this election. Leoni?
Thanks very much. Thanks for listening to us today and taking time out of your day to listen to us in our, our presentations. Vote for me as your number one vote. I will do my best and go forward for you and serve you hard around that council table. I have worked hard for the last 12 years and I'll continue to do that if re-elected. I am a hardworking councillor and I put everything into it. So vote Leoni number one. And again, as Adrian says, I don't mind your second vote as well, but I really would prefer your number one. Thank you very much.
Okay, Miriam, on why they should vote for your husband?
Vote Lothendai, more than just talk. Vote for Lothendais, number one. He's been community minded for the last three decades and have helped in the life of people who are homeless and people who are aging people and helping the people of our community. Thank you.
Adrian?
Here we go. Try a new mic, see if that improves things. Right, hi, Adrian Phillips. I've got a lot of diverse business experience, retail, distribution, direct sales, running and recruiting salespeople. I've recruited more than 300 in my life. Active member of Chamber of Commerce. I can read a balance sheet. I have some experience in running my own businesses, both successfully and not so successfully. And I will bring dynamic to the chamber that will be positive. I'm also communicatable with and I can communicate, which means I'll be there and represent you strongly. I regularly visit just about every cafe in Palmerston North, attend most of the major events in Palmerston North and I'm easy to communicate with. If you want somebody that's hardworking, got good life experience, good business experience, non-political and just wants to represent you as a representative for the city, vote me number one. And as I said, if you can't get me number one, give me your second.
Okay, Kim?
Fantastic. Yes, I am Rainbow Pride, Parmi Pride, all things Palmerston North. I am asking you to vote for me. I will be the voice for our communities, our vulnerable communities when they can't speak for themselves. I represent tenants, Rainbow Communities, have been working with our seniors, with Gray Power as well. And I'm a true community activist, have spent many years working with unions in the community and strongly believe that we need to ensure we have community voices and representations for those who cannot speak for themselves or are in a position to not able to be, to be at the table. Vote for Kim, happy for number one. And number two?
Karen?
My track record shows that I work really hard to try and advocate for the community in the best possible way at the council table. I'm the deputy chair of the Finance Committee, I'm the deputy chair of the Audit and Risk Committee and I do have the skills and determination to help council get back on a financially sustainable path. This will need to include reducing some of our operational expenditure. It'll need to include reprioritizing many of our capital programs. It'll need to look at, it'll need to include looking at options for other revenue generation. And that is something I've proposed a number of options to council in recent years and I'm happy to follow up on those options. Also, it's important for me that we return to having a favorable audit report. I'll continue to listen to my community and I'll continue to respond and act on your behalf. Please vote for me for number one. Thank you.
Okay, Jack?
If you vote for me, you will, I can add value to the, to the community in services. And also I have the art of listening to you. And I also have the ability to manage the problem that, that cannot be solved. So due to my years of experience in technical things and also the investment, I can come up with better ideas how to manage the city and also improve the image of the inner city that is so rundown. So to draw tourists and also investors to upgrade our commercial property and also the industrial property to enhance employment. So if you trust me, I will work for you. And, and that's where I can, I can give you my promise. Thank you.
Okay, and Dave?
Yeah, well, once again, thank you so much for, for listening to us today. Elections come up every three years and this is your opportunity to say, what has the council been doing for me in the last three years? Have I been happy with their performance? Do I want to keep them on or do I want to send a message and maybe select someone else to be your councillor? I'm putting myself forward for council. I think I've got the skills and attributes that can really add value to the community and be a valuable voice as well, about positivity, enthusiasm and really making a difference. I'm originally from Nelson, I'm a Palmerston North boy. I love the community and I want to add something back to the community and do my piece. With your support and with your help, I'd love to be part of this council. And it's got a tremendous heritage and it's an enormous privilege as well to be part of the council. So with your vote, hopefully I can be of some assistance and I'd love your vote. So please vote number one, Dave Salisbury for council. Thank you.
Okay, and just before we go, a little bit of a fun explanation on how STV, your single transferable vote, works. So when it comes to your ballot paper, please make sure you don't just look at your number one vote, but look at your number two, your number three, number four and all that to go down. Because this election here with 13 positions available is going to be decided not just by first preference votes, but by second, thirds, fourth, fifths and sixth and all the way down. Now, in order to achieve the quota, the quota is the number of positions available plus one, which is 13 divided by the total number of voter, number of votes. In order for a candidate to sit there and get across the line, they must achieve at least 7.14% plus one vote in order to be over the quota. If a candidate gets more votes than what they need for the quota, their percentage in excess gets redistributed as points of votes down to their second and second preferences and go that way down. A good example would be is if the quota is, was it 650 votes? But you've got 1,000 votes, 300, was it? 0.65 of the vote will remain as yours and 0.35 of your voters' second preferences will be redistributed downwards. And that's why you see often a lot of point votes when it comes to STV, when it's multi-member wards. Now, if the elimination comes from the bottom, which means, you know, not, not all positions are filled, those full votes get redistributed up to the top and keeps redistributing until you get 13 candidates over the line. So please make sure when you get out and voting, you rank your candidates on the voting papers. Look at all the tools that are available for voting offices. We at It's in the Ballot have took, have got many shows here. And you can see the candidates who are proud to put their feet to the It's in the Ballot fire, but also look at other options out there as well. You know, as I say, we shouldn't just be focusing on us as an echo chamber, but look at everyone else out there as well. Because we believe an informed voter is a happy voter that makes a smart decision. Okay, we'll be back here at 4pm for some more, was it? How do I say the name of the ward? Was it, sorry? I'm sorry. I, I just know that, yeah. And we'll be back, yes, yeah, we'll be back for the third one. We'll be back for a part three because we've got so many candidates. And then later on at 7pm night, we've got the Mural race. We'll see you then. Have a good afternoon.